Evening and welcome to this regular session of the Grant County Council. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Lemming. If you would stand.
I'm back. Invite you to bow your head and pray with me. Heavenly Father, just be with us tonight. Give us peace, give us good judgment and discernment as we try to manage the people's money and do the people's business for the betterment of Grant County. Thank you for this chance to have this fellowship together, watch out over all of our public servants as they watch out over us. In Jesus' name, I pray, for His sake. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. If you would, do the roll call, please.
Scott.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Perez.
Here.
Polling.
Here.
Lemming.
Here.
We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the auditor's report.
Do you have your general fund balance, your health insurance fund balance? I've also given to you tonight an updated 4D from the budget gains, a list of additional appropriations. Somebody has asked about the additional appropriations that have been given out this year, a list of items that will need to be revisited. This is my list. I don't know if I overlooked anything, but these are some of the items that really need to be revisited. I also have supplied a calculation for Mike Scott for the races and the history of the races of the year. So if you have any questions.
She did have something for additional?
Yeah. There is a list there.
It's on that table. I like this one for the list.
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments from the members regarding the auditor's report? the minutes. And before you this evening, as well as electronically, you should have received the minutes from the regular session of July the 17th, 2024. I will note there is a slight typo on the last page spoke with a nine. Other than that, are there any questions or comments regarding the minutes? If there are none, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Perez, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve July the 17th minutes, noting the one correction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The minutes are approved. We'll go ahead and move on to new business. The first item in our new business is the Grant County Sheriff, Dell Garcia, some transfers of funds within the misdemeanor fund, additional appropriations within the general fund, as well as a salary ordinance amendment request. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Thank you for having me here tonight. We did send some requests for some appropriations, one thing we learned, or I've learned as my time as sheriff is that public safety can be very expensive. So it seems like every time I come here, hopefully one day I'll come bearing gifts instead of asking for money. But we are, we have found ourselves for the last several years that we've had to receive additional appropriation for meals. We're averaging about 12,000 to 13,000 per week in paying those, so we are running short. The amount we requested is more than what we're going to need, but we wanted to make sure that we don't have to come back to you again towards the end of the year to ask for more money. So I think the majority or a big part of that money will be sent back to the general fund if we don't use it. We currently use Tiger as our vendor for meals, and next year, one of our big projects is going to be to look for other options to see if we can get some less expensive options for the meals. Unfortunately, if this, we're stuck with Tiger. And they're doing a good job. I'm not trying to badmouth Tiger. They're doing a good job with providing the meals. And I always think that we always need to see if we can get a better bank for our buck, if we can get better services for less money. So we're going to start that process in January, talking to other vendors. We were looking at possibly even going back to hiring our own kitchen staff. What I've learned from that, I had our records clerk look at that to get me the numbers, and we're paying right around what we're paying now because we actually had employee people take salaries, benefits. The good thing about having a vendor, we don't have to worry about ordering in the logistical parts of feeding the inmates. So we are requesting that money, 260,500 for meals. We're also requesting 50,000 for jail supplies. With inflation going up, it's cost us more to purchase our jail supplies. We were also mandated by the state to replace all of our meal trays, and that's going to be between 11,400 to 14,814 dollars to replace all those. I can tell you this, we changed, we're changing our process of what we're doing, but what we're finding out is some of the items that we're having to replace are being damaged by the inmates. So what we want to do is we're going to start with the process of monitoring that better. When we issue, because of certain items that we have to issue, towels, mats, and what we're hoping to do, that once we can document who's getting what, when they return those items, if they are, if they have been torn or damaged, we're going to do our best to try to hold the inmate accountable to help pay to replace those items. Now, that may be a little bit more difficult than what, you know, can't sweep blood out of a turd, you know, say, but we're at least going to try. We're going to do a better job of making sure that the equipment is inspected prior to being given out to the inmates so that we can do that. But that's a big part of the reason that we're going to need this money, additional money, is because of inflation and some of the things that we're being mandated by the state to do. And then the next request was for the D-home contractual, which is 240,000. The payment to house a juvenile went up from when we first started, a year and a half ago, from about $80 to now we're paying 200 to 300 dollars per day, per juvenile. As I've mentioned in the past, we're, all we do at the sheriff's office, we just pay the bill. I don't, we don't decide who goes to what home or who gets placed where. That's all done by community corrections. The only thing I can tell you right now is that we're running short on funds for that, and if we want to continue to place the juveniles at these other facilities, we're going to need some more money to do that.
How many do you have rolling down, Sheriff?
That's, we're trying to get those numbers from community corrections. I wasn't able to get ahold of them today to get you the exact numbers. And since we're not the ones that are doing that, if we were doing that, I'd be able to take you around, top of my head without that. I'd have to get them, but I can get that to you guys.
Have you seen any contracts regarding housing them out of county? Like, are we under any contracts with?
No, we just do it, they just accept them, I have to, they just accept them.
So what happens is if an arrest is made or they're in the process, community corrections through their juvenile probation officers contact several different places, see what kind of bedding they have available, if it's available, to get approved, and then they send either our officer or the PD and take them there. And then we're responsible for not only paying, but also transferring them to court. So then we have to make the arrangements to get them seen within 48 hours of initial arrest, or if in the process longer, some of them have been housed. For example, we just had one this week that's been housed up in Fort Wayne, but was misbehaving so bad that we had to find another place for them in which community corrections does that, and then we have to transport them down to Monsey or YFC. So we're always moving people around. As far as contracts go, that would be between community corrections and how they pick and choose which places they go.
It's not like our adults, where we have a contract with Fulton County, or Tipton County. It's an open, who has an open bed and who's willing to take them. I believe the way community correction does it.
Why don't they use the TV more to stand out and transport them to court?
That's one of the things we've been working on with the judges, the juvenile judges, they'll do it because you have some attorneys, I don't want to put this, that are a little bit more seasoned and have a difficult time with the technology. So that's been an issue. So that's one of the main reasons why we're not doing it with juveniles. And we're hoping to get to a place where we can do that, because I think most of the facilities that they are being sent to are able to do that. I think the problem or the issue has been on our side and not on our side, but that's something we're still talking, and I think we're going to have a meeting with the Superior Court Street judge and see if we can hit that ball rolling again. I know we've talked to the other courts, and we're in the process of getting more equipment in the jail so that we can even do that a little bit more with the adults.
More safety.
Yeah. Heck, because anytime you're not moving people, it's a lot better for us. But that's where we're at with those three requests, and we're just asking that you approve them so that, number one, we can feed the inmates, number two, that we can house the juveniles, and in the third, we provide the proper supplies that we need to make sure our jail is run properly.
So back to the juveniles. So what you're saying is you're not sure if we have a contract or we do not have?
I don't believe we do. It's something that community corrections takes care of, but because we're at the mercy of the facilities, I think if they have an open bed, they just accept them. I can get clarification from community correction and get you a better answer for that.
Yeah, because what concerns me is that without a contract, they're going to take what we're going to pay, maybe $80 one, maybe $200 and?
Well, the one from 80 to 200 to 300 because there's a lack of facilities that are accepting juvenile. So it's kind of, wow, you know, your options are limited, so we're going to charge what we want to charge. And it could be the same even on the adult side. You know, you're at the mercy, we're just, we're lucky on the adult side that most sheriffs are going to show grace to other sheriffs because they may be in need someday. But I don't think it works that way on the juvenile side, because that cost has gone up since we even started. I think it was 80 some dollars for most places, and maybe $100 at the most, and that's two. Some of them could be up to $300 per day.
But not for all of them.
So not for all of them. Some of them are a little bit cheaper, some a little bit more expensive. And what I'll do is I'll give, we'll give them to community corrections tomorrow. I'll see if they can email us a breakdown of our facility, because they've done that in the past, and I'll forward it to you so you guys can kind of have it to see what we're talking about.
Sheriff on the meals, I know you've mentioned that you're operating at 80% capacity. So I don't want it at 270, 49, whatever.
298 today.
So are we operating at that 80% capacity? Are we under that, or is that a wish on your part?
They recommend the, Indiana Department of Corrections recommends that jail be only 80% full so that you're able to move inmates to different locations immediately if you're having issues with inmates acting correctly and not making bad decisions up there, we'd be able to move them. And we're at full capacity now. Tomorrow, we'll be sending, how many to?
So we're in a process today, tomorrow we'll send 14 back to full.
So we'll send 14 to get our numbers back down. But right now, we have 72 already at other facilities. In the meals, it's, the more you have, the less you pay for per plate, and that's why it kind of fluctuates between 12,000 and 13,000 per week. The less you have, the, that price goes up some. So we do still save a little bit of money without having as many inmates, but the more inmates you have, the less you actually pay for plate, for each plate. And I think for the last three years, three or four years, I think we've always had to come back for additional appropriations for meals.
Yeah, I don't know what that toll is on me. If this is granted 260,000 on top of what's already budgeted, we have to be considering more than we have our own staff down there.
Yeah, and I'll get those, that study that the Becky did for us, I'll send that down to you guys so you can kind of look at it. But it did show that we were paying right around what we pay now. It was a lot of less, but then we're having to do all the ordering, the logistical part of it, I didn't, wasn't a part of that when you do have a vendor. And then the other issue, now finding employees to work. I know I've talked to Howard County, there's very few jails anymore that have their own cooks. Talking to Sheriff Fashi over there, he says, once their main cook retires, they're probably going to have to go to a vendor because they just can't find people looking to kitchen right now. So you do pay a little bit more, but it's less work that's being done by our staff than if the vendor's doing it.
Well, Sheriff, you're the first up, so you'll be the first one to hear this. You'll be the only one. As I look through, we have a list of additional appropriations, and the two highest that I can see, at least going through this quickly without having time to absorb, is the sheriff's department and commissioner's office as well. Commissioner's office will hear the same thing, but I'm looking at roughly over 700,000, close to 700,000 or more in additionals. Sheriff's departments at 750,000 plus, that's what additional appropriations are in this year. If we grant all of these requests, we're going to be close to 1.3 million dollars in additional appropriations for the year. But that, we can't maintain that. There's no way possible we're going to be able to do that year in and year out.
Well, we're going to look for other vendors, try to get them at a less expensive rate. Public safety is expensive, and we're mandated by the state to feed our inmates. So I don't know how we avoid that other than trying to find a less expensive way of doing it, which will make sure we do our due diligence in trying to find the best way of doing that. But you know, we do have to, we do have to feed them. The issue with the D-home, obviously that's something that we were handed with the D-home being closed several years ago. Unfortunately, we're seeing more and more violent crime from juveniles that have to be placed in other facilities. So, you know, our options are, we don't fund it and we let these violent crimes take place in our community, or we find a way, a less expensive way of dealing with it. We'll do our part trying to find a cheaper vendor. I think, I think we may be able to do that, but you know how it is, the first couple years, they'll save you money, and eventually that starts going up. And I don't mind having quicker, switching vendors all the time as we need to, and it saves the taxpayers money. That's why, that's why I say when I came up here, it's expensive. I hate coming up here and asking for money, but we've got to feed the inmates and?
I believe it ain't on you. It's still the system.
Yeah, we've got to fix the system.
No, I think you hit the nail on the head just a minute ago. Anytime we enter into these new contracts that are going to save us money in the beginning and in the year, in the end, it costs us more. If it's software, if it has anything to do with IT, maybe now meals, I mean, been here for a long time, and it's just like, it's just the same record that's been played over and over and over.
You see it in your homes. I mean, you get Dish Network today at a good price, a couple years, it's more expensive, and then you go back to DirecTV, commercial. So, yeah, it's, we have to continue to hold these vendors accountable. And I've told vendors that we've met with, hey, we're not, we're not stuck with you. We'll look elsewhere. If you can't give us the best bank for our buck, we'll be willing to go somewhere else. I'm sure once we, once Tiger figures out that that's what we're doing, we're hoping that they'll come down on the prices and we can negotiate for better prices. But they know, I mean, we switched vendors at the beginning of the administration from Secures to CPC because they gave us a better deal. Now let CPC know, hey, if you quit treating your customers, which is us now, and giving us the best bank for buck, I have no problem going back to Secures or any other vendor that can give us a better price. And at the end of the day, we want to make sure we save the taxpayers as much money as we can.
Seems like over the years, we've been really good at bringing consultants and people who in the end have a benefit from giving us the studies and the information that they want to give us. I think it's almost time that we figure out a way to bring in an independent consultant that's going to examine a lot of these systems who aren't going to stand to have a personal benefit from giving us those answers. I think we might be at a point right now, we need to take a look at something like that.
And when you're talking about law enforcement, I mean, you take a regular hammer that will cost you $10 at Harbor Freight, you paint it black and call it a tactical hammer, it's going to go from $10 to $50 real quick. So, yeah, I think people do kind of take advantage of the fact that, you know, we have to supply these things, and if there's something that we can do as a sheriff's office to bring those number down, we'll then try to do everything we can.
Thank you.
You are confident that this will get you through the remainder of the year?
Yeah. In fact, I think we'll have money left over because we were originally coming, the last month we canceled the meeting, so we were able to stretch the money that we had because this amount was for an additional four weeks. Just if we don't have those additional four weeks, we're able to stretch them. And we're confident that it gets to money left over.
And Angie, you've advertised the additionals, correct?
Correct.
Are there any questions or comments from the members regarding the additional appropriations? Meals, 260,500, jail supplies at 50,000, and D-home contractual at 250,000.
I just, I guess my thinking is, if you've come back every year, why didn't we just adjust the budget every year?
That's what we did this year.
So this year's budget?
Yeah, we adjusted it to be a true budget to what we really need. I know from, and I'm not saying you guys did, you guys do this, but I know from being on the council previously, and something I didn't agree with then is sometimes they would not, they wouldn't put what you really needed because they wanted to show the public, hey, we're not increasing the budget, knowing that we'd have to go back later on for appropriations. And this year, what we requested more, to try to show a truer budget so that citizens can actually know, hey, this is what we really, what we really need. I think if you look at our numbers for next year, we did increase the meals.
Are there any other questions? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Perez, a second from Mr. Connor to approve the additional appropriations within the sheriff's office budget in the amount for meals, 260,500, jail supplies, 50,000, and D-home contractual in the amount of 250,000. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? You're from the public and want to speak, just come to the podium and state your name and your address, and if there's none, nobody from the public, we'll do the roll call, please.
Perez.
Hi.
Connor.
Yes.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Lemming.
All right.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and talk about the transfer if you want. That wasn't included, so. The transfer request is in the amount of 40,695.86 from the misdemeanor fund to sheriff work crew salaries.
That's basically a pay for those positions. And we're really proud of the work. They're doing a good job here in the city and in the counties, and a lot of good things in Gas City.
We still have the partnership with Marion.
Yeah, they have two work crews. We have one for the county, and then we have one that's a part-time work crew for Gas City. He's actually, does SRO school resource officer, made that three-way deal with Oak Hill, Gas City, and us, the county, and that's working out really well. So we have those workers that are working.
So this isn't to add?
No, 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 it's just.
We do this every, every year at the annual.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Polling, a second from Mr. Connor to approve the transfer in the amount of 40,695.86 from the misdemeanor fund to the sheriff work crew salaries. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Polling.
Yes.
Connor.
Here.
Scott.
All right.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
All right.
Lemming.
All right.
Middlesworth.
Yes. Motion carries.
Sheriff, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, sir.
Work crazy. Do they get feedback about the community appreciating what they're doing?
On Facebook, they do. You'd be surprised how often, even when they're out working, the community people from the community will come out, bring them water.
See, I didn't know if that was even permitted.
As long as, as long as they go to a work crew leader and they're able to see what's going on, and oftentimes, we do reward them with, you know, we'll order pizza for them. But, yeah, they, we publicize what they do. We're really proud of what they do, not only Marion and Gas City and out of county, and we make sure we put their work on a Facebook page, and we do get a lot of.
I just wondered if they personally, the inmates, hear it directly?
Oh, yeah, yes. They do.
Good. Because I see what they're doing, I can chose Brian. I personally appreciate them, and I hope you'll so express that, too.
We'll definitely do that. We appreciate you saying that.
Any other questions or comments? We'll move on to your salary ordinance amendment request.
Well, this is not going to cost the county anything. I was approached by Eastborough. I have one of the grants that they're getting, they're wanting to fund a part-time SRO position that they will fully fund. We just need to create the position for them, and what they'll do is they'll work part-time, taking care of the elementary school. We currently have one at the high school. What they wanted, they wanted to make sure that their elementary schools were secure because the SRO is actually going to just three different schools. So they wanted to get a part-time individual to do just the elementary. So we've been able to partner with Officer Beebe, I think out of Van Buren, that's going to take that position. He's a tier-one certified police officer, so he'll just, if you guys approve this, he'll move right into that role and work part-time for, as an SRO at Eastbrook Elementary Schools.
Are there any questions or comments? I know one of the questions I have, we would still pay FICA, right? Even though it's part-time? This is a salary package total does not include insurance, life insurance at FICA. I think we'd still be required to pay the FICA. So that, that $214.16, it's probably not correct, is my guess.
We'll get that adjusted in the contract. We were kind of, when this proposal came to us, I was thinking, well, do I do the contract first, commissioners, or do I come to you guys first and get the approval for the positions and then work out more of the details in the contract? And so I decided to come to you first, get your permission to create those positions, that position, and then move forward with the contract and kind of iron that out in the contract.
So currently, we have no SRO part-time deputies, right?
Correct, that is correct.
So I guess my question is, why would you not use like a special deputy title? Would that not achieve the same thing?
It could, but we wanted to do the SRO because we want, he will only work, right now, our special deputy doesn't work all year round. He's only going to work during the school year, and he's not going to work in the summertime. And so we thought it'd be good to create this position specifically for that. That way, if that grant ever goes away, then obviously that position goes away. We could do it the other way, if that's a lender of the council. We were just thinking, since he's only going to be working 180 days, that would probably be the best, best way to do that.
Without taking somebody off the road for this position?
No, no, we hired, he's already a part-time or reserve deputy, or reserve officer, Van Buren, but he was a former full-time police officer that's kept up his credentials to be tier-one. So he would, he had to agree to take on that position if it's approved. And it worked well for him, too, because I think he's a farmer, so having that time in the summertime and things like that helps him out. So really, it's a win-win-win for all of us with the way this actually came down.
So, I mean, obviously with the SROs and the schools, we're getting reimbursed the salary piece for the most part, but, you know, the county's liable, liability insurance, the cars, the gas, the equipment, you know, there's a lot that the county is putting out. you know, there's a lot that the county is putting out to be a part of these, you know, school resource programs, right?
Right.
So, I don't want, I mean, I think that it's great for the schools to have an officer in place, but we're technically not getting a full reimbursement.
Okay.
Would you agree to that? Like, even this part-time, is he going to be supplied a car to get to the school?
For the days that he works, yes. It won't be a permanent take-home car. Just when he was working, he'll be able to have, because obviously, if you're at a school, you want, police presence is a big thing to deter. So, you want to be able to see that squad car out there in front of the school, and especially now, we've had, what, three threats just this year already in different schools. So, we want to make sure that there's a deterrent there. So, he would get a vehicle for the time that he's working at the school. It won't be a permanent take-home car for him. That'd just be something that he'll be using during the school year.
And then the other question would be, would he be entitled to, like, overtime?
No. All that, he'll be set hours, part-time, and all that will be covered with what the school's paying. So, we won't have, we won't have any additional, because he can't work if he works over, like, 35 hours, right, if that's full-time, and he has to provide benefits.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, yeah. So, he'll be way under that. I think right now, they're kind of putting him at 20 hours. From the meeting we had with Eastbrook today, they wanted him to work four hours a day for five days a week.
Well, he worked six months, and he worked 40 hours. I mean, he's still going to be, yeah, right, he'd be under.
Yeah. And that's when we talked to HR, they said as long as he's under for the year, that that's what they look at. They don't look at the, what you're working weekly.
So, this is an additional?
Yes.
SRO?
Additional SRO.
Okay, maybe a stupid question, but I'm just trying to figure all this out in my head. So, like, if Marion or, or Marion schools or Mississauga schools have one, it's usually a city police guard that they're utilizing. And they're hired through, I mean, their Marion City or Gas City Police Department uniform. Why, why would Eastbrook, why would this setup be different than what those schools have? Is there just difference between city and county?
Yeah, because they're county schools. I mean, we have, our, our SRO at Oak Hills, our Watah County deputy, our SRO at Eastbrook is a county deputy. We're hoping to be able to get SRO at Madison Grant at some point, just because we feel that we want to make sure that the kids are safe. And having an officer present there is, can be a big deterrent to anything happening. And we haven't talked to Madison Grant since last year, but I'm not sure if they'll ever come on board with it. But, our goal is to try to just do what we can to make sure our kids are safe, especially in the world that we're living in today.
Which is a deterrent, it's definitely a huge benefit. It will happen in Georgia, there's an SRO there. I think that, that officer was there to prevent anything from happening, but unfortunately.
And it's good for us, too, because our, our deputy gets to know the kids and you get to develop relationships. I mean, I was an SRO, a part-time, when I was at MPD, probably for 18 years, you'd be surprised when I'm at Agnesburg, so it's, it's really good for our guys, too.
So, why wouldn't Upland or Van Buren, either one of them as, as a town, do this, like, like Gas City has done, or anybody else? Wouldn't there be a benefit to them for having a, somebody that could be part-time and also could, you know, be, be on, be on the road in those, those communities, too?
And that, that would probably be a question for the Eastbrook administration. They asked us about it. I'm not sure why they would, I think they'd go to the other departments. I think they came to us because we already have one at Eastbrook. So, I think they just feel comfortable with, with what we're doing there. And it could be an issue of manpower for them, too. Again, for some of the smaller agencies, it makes it a little bit more difficult to, to be able to allocate a person, or even to hire a person sometimes. Marion's having a struggle hiring people now, and thank God, we haven't had that same issue, that it could strike any of our departments at any time. I mean, I'd like to think that because we did a job, and that's why they came to us. So, I think our deputies do an outstanding job.
And would they start?
As soon as you guys approve it, as soon as we can get the ball rolling.
Would this position be a part of the union?
No. I don't think, I don't think part-time positions are part of the union.
Do we know that for sure, though?
I'll, I'll double-check on that, but I'm pretty sure they're not. Because I don't think any of the special deputies that work up there.
Yeah, none of the special deputies are, but they are special deputies. This is, you know, we're creating a new position. Want to make sure that it wouldn't fall in that category, I guess.
I'll, I'll check with our, I don't think it is, but I'll double-check on that. And we can make it part of the contract.
Yeah.
And then, just once I get the contract, we get the contract out, I'll only want presented to the commissioners, I'll send you guys a copy so you guys can kind of view it and see if you have any input. And obviously, we always send it to Kyle.
Mr. President, with some of the questions that we have, I just want to ask the question. Sheriff, you can intervene, too, but, I mean, we have some contractual things that need to get worked out. I, I don't, I don't know if it makes sense to approve something without the contract. May we better off tabling this until we see the contract, to know what we're getting into? I mean, is it, is it advisable to?
Does the commissioners have to prove it because it's a new position before us?
They would have to approve the contract, yes.
And that's kind of where I was at, do I bring it to you first or do I bring it to them first? My thought was, if we don't have the positions approved, there's no need for a contract. Because if the contract, if we don't agree on the contract, then the positions can be null and void.
I think that we could approve it with language that protects our interest as far as being that if, you know, it's grant-funded, that if the grant was to leave, that, you know, the position would be vacated, that the, that this would not be included in the union negotiations as far as a position, right? I think we could protect ourselves that way and pass it, if you want to.
Let me do.
But, we need to know, we need to make sure that the salary ordinance amendment, the salary ordinance would be correct, the correct dollar amount, right, Angie?
Yes.
Do you have that?
I just.
I mean, obviously, this isn't right.
Yeah, I think that, I think what you're going to see, this is going to be more than what we're really going to need, because our meeting with them, originally, they were wanting to do eight-hour days, and then they changed it in our meeting today to just four-hour days, five days a week. So, so what's on here is actually, probably going to end up being less. So, once we get that figured out in the contract, or exactly get the contract right now, and I'll even send one to Mr. Glickfield so he can look at it. That way, all parties can have an idea of what's going on with that.
So, we amend the salary, or create the salary, create the, I think this is what we got to do, okay? We're going to create the SRO position, a part-time position within the sheriff's department's budget. The total grant would be the $38,548.80. That the position would be vacated if the grant funding was to be eliminated, and since it's part-time, they're only going to get the 20 hours or 28-hour minimum, going to be effective immediately or on the passing of the contract. Is that right?
Well, I would suggest, Mr. President, is that if you desire to approve this today, then you do so with the parameters you just put in place, also subject to the, in other words, the motion would be subject to approval of the contract by the commissioners, potentially even approval by yourself as president, to make sure everything's in line based on what was just said. That way, I think you're, you cover what needs to be covered. Because you're just admitting the salary ordinance. But, you don't want to amend it unless the contract's approved by the commissioners, and you also want to make sure the parameters you just outlined are in that contract.
Yeah.
You would also need to come back and fund us with an additional appropriation for that. Or transfer.
Yeah. Shouldn't, maybe we should, like Mr. Scott said, if we tabled it to the next meeting, then we could bring both additional appropriation back as well. We have the correct number. I had to put it off. I mean, obviously, it's school safety, but.
He can give, he can go and present it with our support theoretically, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, I can go and then just come back and you guys complain, get your final votes and go. That way, commissioners have a chance to look at it. Mr. Glickfield, you'll have a chance to kind of look at the contract, which is perfecter.
You have solid.
Because you're going to have, I mean, we're going to have to appropriate the funds anyhow, so we'd have to come back at least one more time. So, yeah.
So, we just show approval by consensus and table it?
Yeah.
And then give, Sheriff Ford, you need to go to the commissioners.
Sure.
And next time, we'll have the particulars, and then pass on one setting.
That's fine with me, is that fine with you, Sheriff?
That's, that's fine with me, because we're going to have to come back anyhow.
Right.
So, is there a motion?
I think I'm sounding like a politician. I just regurgitated what David said and took credit for it.
That second? I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Lemming to approve our blessing to pursue the SRO part-time position, grant-funded with Eastbrook Community Schools. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Lemming.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Hi.
Polling.
Yes.
Middleworth.
Yes. Motion carries.
And I do have one more of those.
Yes.
And this is kind of a little bit of a similar situation, except it's at Jonesboro. I was approached by the mayor of Jonesboro. As you all know, that certain police agencies are having a difficult time finding police officers to, to patrol their areas. What you're seeing around the state and just talking at the ISA, what you're seeing now, a lot, a lot of your smaller communities are wanting to contract with the sheriff's office to help patrol their community. I was approached by the Jonesboro mayor. He's wanting to fund two positions, two deputy positions that will come out of Jonesboro budget, and the agreement will be, and, you know, once again, it's similar to this, wasn't sure, should I come to you first or the commissioners first? So, it'll probably be, you guys agree to, and they have to do the same thing. But, but the agreement is, and with the, with the contract will read, is that, obviously, if that company stops, we'll have to, to cut those, those two positions, and we will be responsible for patrolling Jonesboro as part of the district, one of our districts, where just, they just tend to be merely deputies that patrol Jonesboro only. So, there'll be a great county sheriff's deputy who'll be responsible to patrol Jonesboro, especially in the evening time. They plan on keeping their day shift staff, which is, I think, one, one officer right now. They plan on keeping him along with a couple reserves. But, the issue that they have is patrolling in the evenings. So, he came to me with this idea, and there are other agencies, other counties that do that with some of their smaller communities that have a harder time providing public safety for their communities. We think that that'd be a great idea for both. We think it's a win-win for, for them and for us, because we end up taking calls there anyhow in the evening, and they have no one available to take the calls, and we end up responding. So, we think it's going to be a win for both. It gives us additional manpower to have that additional district to, to our districts and to our patrol areas. So, we think it would help them out and provide the citizens of Jonesboro with coverage in the evening times, too.
Sheriff, your letter requests the one deputy on.
He called us, he called us earlier this week, and he said that, at first, he thought they were only going to be able to fund one, but after talking to the, to his board, they figured out that they could actually fund two positions. Our initial conversation, he was even looking at possibly doing three.
So.
We did talk to him about vehicles, because we do, we incur some of that cost. He's agreed to turn, or give us some of their vehicles that they use, since they're not going to need them, and that we could use their vehicles as part of our fleet also.
So, with the two deputy positions, does that mean it went to more than $81,000?
Yes, yes. And because when we, when we originally got the final amount, and we presented him with it, he didn't think that they'd be able to do the two. And then, after talking to his board, he called us, it was today, Wednesday, he called us yesterday, I think it was Monday, he was able to get ahold of Chief K, and said that they'd be able to do the two positions like they originally wanted to do.
And that can't find somebody, two people?
Well, what, what happens is this, it's, how do I want to put this? Police officers become police officers because they want to stay active, and they want to, you know, part of the, the idea of being a police is doing police work. And some of the, it's, some of the smaller communities, they don't have as much responses to go to or calls to go to. So, what you, what you see happen is you see these smaller agencies hiring officers that end up going to bigger agencies so they can get more action, so to speak. So, I think that's why they're having a hard time finding people. And once again, you know, I, I credit our deputies, where I think they do such a good job that some of these smaller agencies like what they're doing, and they feel comfortable with our deputies patrolling their areas.
I mean, there's no question about it, that Jonesboro would benefit huge from this. Couple of the questions I have or concerns, two deputies would be two, you know, additional full-time merit deputies, which would be union benefits, the whole, the whole package, right? Obviously, they're going to, you know, fund the, the health insurance piece and the salary piece, right? I mean, this, I mean, the county still is going to pay liability, gas, cars. I think that there's a lot of policy issues that probably need to be worked out. I'd really like to see, you know, what the contract's going to be, just to know where I stand on this. I know Swayze tried to do this years ago. It didn't work out for them, obviously, because of money. I just don't want us to go down this road, and then the other cities or towns jump on board, and then pretty soon, that it's more of a burden than we can bear.
I think what you're going to see in, in the future, it's, what's happening in police work is, the pool of people putting into, putting in for police positions has greatly diminished in time. When I hired on in '94, the cafeteria at Marion High School was full of applicants for five positions. Today, you're lucky to get 10 people. I know our last process that we had, I think we had five or six people. I know Marion's only had five to six people come to their tri, not trials, but their, their process that they do, their hiring process. So, what you're seeing is a pool has diminished quite a bit, and then what we're having is, we're having agencies like the state police giving big raises to, to their, to their state troopers. You're seeing agencies from other places that are giving big raises, and they're making more money there. So, what's happened is, that's okay when you have a big pool of people that are wanting to be police, but now what you're having is you're having agencies that are paying more money coaching from smaller agencies like us, and even smaller agencies like Jonesboro, Fairmount, and different places like that. So, I think you may see this become more common if we don't, if we're not able to attract more people to do police work, because now we're, we're playing with a smaller pool of, of people, and there's not enough to go around. So, you're going to see that, I think you're probably going to see that increase, especially in our smaller communities. And what happens is then, someone has to patrol them, someone has to provide that safety and security for those citizens, and it's going to fall on the county.
Yeah, but, I mean, you have trouble sometimes, too. If all these little towns jump on board, too, that's a heavy burden on top of you.
It sure is, and, you know.
You're feeling the spots.
So, luckily for us, on, on the merit side, we haven't had issues. We've been fully staffed on the merit side, and we'll keep, we, we'll keep working to make sure, we're trying to attract people. One of the benefits we have is, we have a, kind of like a minor release system within our jail. We've got a lot of young people that come, work in the jail, that want to eventually go out on the road. So, we do have that pool of people that we can pull, which obviously takes away from our duty. We have to, we have to replace them. But, that does help us out quite a bit. In fact, our last two deputies that we put on, I have, I think in the last year, the three or four we put on have been jailed. Some of the best officers I knew worked in the jail, some of the worst ones, I knew two worked in the jail, but the majority of them went to work in the jail, become great officers. And so, we at least have that minor release team, for lack of a better term, for me, to, to pull from. I think that's why we've been, we've been blessed to, to be able to keep our merit positions filled.
So, would Jonesboro still have a chief of police?
Yeah, their chief would stay on, work in day shift hours, and we would do mainly[1803.71] So, our central district would cover Jonesboro, and respond to any calls that they have there. And the good thing about it is, we do it already, especially if they don't have anybody working at night. And so, we're already doing it and not getting any benefit from it. And it does stretch our staffing, because we have an additional place to patrol and to respond to. With this, Jonesboro with willingness to fund two positions will give us more staffing to be able to do that without stretching our staff too thin.
I just know, you know, a couple of years ago, we was in the same boat as Jonesboro, our small town. We was not attractive because of pay, right? And we took it upon ourselves here, gave them some huge raises over the last few years, right? Why wouldn't Jonesboro, if they're not being attractive, do the same thing? No, they're not gonna do that. They want us to bear some of that burden. While they're paying, we're still not getting full reimbursement. And I know that if they're not patrol, if, you know, they don't have anybody on staff, right, we're gonna take the call anyway, so we're gonna get, we don't have to be there anyway. And so, we're getting a little bit of reimbursement. I guess I would just like to see a little bit more reimbursement, and then maybe just some of the finer details of the policy on just how it's gonna function, I guess.
Well, they'll be, they'll fall under our current policies. They will not fall under Jonesboro at all. That was part of the agreement that we had talked into, be part of the contract. They will be Grand County Sheriff's deputies. They will not answer to Jonesboro at all. They will be our deputies. They will fall under our policies, our rules and regulation and our command structure. So, they won't fall under them at all. They'll be our deputies. But I understand what you're saying as far as the other costs that come with it.
Which, you know, right now, I mean, the county's always helped the small towns out by, you know, we allow them access to all the training that the Sheriff's Department holds, right? Including firearms, EVO, ERT, whatever it is, they're getting those benefits for free, right? So, I don't know. I just, I'd like to see the policies on--
Okay, we'll have the contract ready now. Like I said, it's getting more and more common throughout the state. So, we'll have, I'll mail that contract also to the IFR, getting ready for the Commissioners. But, you know, you're right, it does cost. But right now, it's costing us, and we're getting nothing for it. So, at least this way, we're getting something back. And the most important thing is, is we're providing the service to Jonesboro, which is a part of Grand County. And we want to make sure that the people in Jonesboro feel safe, and that their public safety needs are being met also. You know, part of the reason people don't stay in some smaller places is, like I said, police, especially your younger ones, you know, they love the lights and sirens, you know, they like the action. And that's why sometimes we'll leave some of the younger guys to other agencies. But we'll get that ready for you, and I'll get that sent out to you.
Is there any other questions or comments?
I got one. Just, I mean, just, in fairness, keep the baseball analogy going. There's, if the Sheriff's Department is AAA, and the small towns are single A, there's not even enough players to play AAA right now. This is why I can't, I have openings in Upland, there's openings in Van Buren, there's openings in Jonesboro. We can't do it. If we don't have coverage, which we don't have times, or Van Buren doesn't at times, or Fairmount doesn't at times, or whoever, Jonesboro, we just call in, tell the Sheriff's Department, we have no one on, they're covering it anyways. Statutorily, unless my meetings have changed and anybody else's, the only people in the county required to apply, provide police is the sheriffs anyways. The cities don't have to do it. They do because they want to provide their own services. But we're gonna be doing the job anyways. Before they just throw their hands up, I'd say we enter the contract and take the money anyways, because we're doing the work already anyways. I know it might not be a hundred percent, if we could work to get it to a hundred percent or a little bit more, so be it. But I'm absolutely in favor of working this out for Grand County.
If I may, I think you know where I'm gonna come from. This, that's the matter of which hat I happen to have on my head as I speak. I'm the attorney for the city of Jonesboro. I'm a resident of the city of Jonesboro. And Jonesboro is in my district. So, I a hundred percent support this. And I want to reiterate what's been said here. The county's doing it anyway. You're having Jonesboro come to you with about a hundred and sixty thousand bucks that you don't have now to pay toward what's being done. And people of Jonesboro are Grand County citizens. They're not from Mars. They're entitled to protection, too. Yeah, would there be a nominal cost for the county to provide this? Yes. But they're Grand County citizens. Over and over and over, I hear folks coming to us needing more money in the interest of public safety. Hello? I mean, the life you save may be your friendly neighborhood councilman. We have stuff going on over there that's bad news. And the Sheriff's deputies do a great job. And we do have people using police positions in on the city police department as a stepping stone. They are not staying. It's not just a want of excitement. They're coming in, they're getting the training, they're getting some experience, and they're out the door to go to greener pastures money-wise. So, you know, I think it's an absolute no-brainer. I'd echo what Jonathan said. There's something we have to have. You can't leave Jonesboro unprotected, and that's what's gonna happen if this isn't funded, or you're gonna have Sheriff's deputies doing it anyway without the hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Do you have any idea how hard it is for a city the size of Jonesboro to come up with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars? They're coming to you offering everything they can give to more than pay their fair share, and they deserve your consideration in this.
And one of the things that come into the office that we talked about is a collaboration with other government entities, and we were able to do that with Gas City and with Oak Hill School. And I think, and we're trying to do that again with Eastbrook and us and Jonesboro. We're trying to collaborate with them to make sure they do have the safety and the police protection that they're asking for. You know, we just want to be service to the public, whether they're in Sweet Source, Swayze, Jonesboro, Fairmount, Marion. As our deputies, we have some of the best-trained officers in the county, no doubt in my mind. We have guys that are professionals. And I think that's why good places like Eastbrook, Jonesboro has approached us, because I think you guys could be proud of the Sheriff's deputies that we have in Grand County. They do an outstanding job. And I think that's why people request our assistance. I know, you know, we were able to create that position for Gas City, that part-time position, and they're very happy with the way our deputies have been handling things there. And I'm sure that Jonesboro will find the same thing if we're able to get this approved.
And I also add, you mentioned the other communities. It's not a slippery slope situation. If other communities come forward, and they're willing to pony up substantial funds to put more deputies on the road, by God, good for them. Bring it on. Let's put more public safety-- Well, I think you ought to build it all over the communities, because like Johnson said, that plan's short, too, right? You're running the same problem, right? We ought to put this out there and see just how many communities really need it. Absolutely. And how much they can afford to-- Not that Indianapolis is the poster child for government, but that's what unit government is. You start having the same police force, because we're having fewer and fewer people that want to be police officers. And you can see why, with the talk of defending the police and the way the police are treated, why anybody wants to do it. I think it takes a special kind of hero or heroine to do it. But we've gotta band together and help each other. I mean, this could theoretically, in another world, go the other way. What if Grand County was falling short, and needed help from officers in the communities? You don't think that we would step forward to help you? Absolutely. We all gotta stick together. We're in the same crime boat. No, I agree with you, Mike. I just think that we should, you know, check with that plan, like Johnson said, with the other ones, and see-- And I respect the concern about money, 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 money. I'm a fiscal conservative. I hate having to spend more money. But dead people don't pay taxes. And it's that serious.
And we'll get the layout of the contract to you. We'll leave the financial stuff, obviously, which is your responsibility. Our responsibility as a Sheriff's Office is to provide safety and protection. And that's what we're willing to do. We'll do whatever it is, pleasure of the Council, whatever you decide, as far as positions are concerned.
And we'll need to get an answer how Mr. Woodfield looked at the contract, if we would be adding two merit deputies with the union contract, and just the, if we can even do that.
The other thing, too, I was questioning, let's say, down the road to Jonesboro can't pay, then where you at?
And we'd have to make the hard decision of either by attrition, letting people go, or having to let people go that we're cutting positions that we can no longer fund. I mean, this whole thing hinges on being able to fund them without increasing the county budget. So, that's something that we have to, we really have to look at. I mean, obviously, I'm always going to argue for the side of public safety and keeping as many deputies as we can, because I believe that's important, not only for the public safety, but it's also important for economic development. People don't want to go to an unsafe community. And unfortunately, as I stated earlier, public safety is expensive. But we, as a community, have to decide, do we want to be safe, or do we not want to be safe? And I just appreciate you guys taking this up and looking at it. And we'll get the contracts to you. You know, we can always award it to, to make sure we're protecting the county. But I think at the end of the day, we need to make sure that the citizens are protected, and we need to do whatever we can to make that happen.
I don't know how we go about getting it, but I think you bring a good point. I mean, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, as Mike knows, is a lot of money to the city of Jonesboro. You know, and I think we'd have to do our due diligence to ensure that the city of Jonesboro, our town, city now--
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, I don't want to offend anybody. I call it a city--
Thank you.
But they can actually afford this and pay it. I don't know if there's a mechanism in place that we can put into this contract that's gonna come close to guaranteeing that, but maybe that's something that--
Or if there's a grants, like you were talking about when they unit, you know, put them all together, like-- I think it's straight out of the budget. Yeah, but you think there's some kind of grants if you do that? You see what I'm saying?
Now, the schools are getting their money prepared from grants.
Well, if we can find it, absolutely. Absolutely. Senator--
So, you'll get all that, right?
We'll get that all, all you, not only will I get it to the Commissioner, all of you, Mr. Woodfield, and, you know, you guys. We kind of have a, you know, we don't reinvent the wheel. There's other communities that do this, so we've done, we've got one of their contracts that we tweeted to meet our needs.
Speaking for the citizens of my district, I want to thank you, Sheriff. I want to thank my fellow Council members for considering this and putting up with my passion, but I hope you understand why. I take it very personally.
Don't ever apologize for your passion.
I'm sorry for apologizing.
I just, I think that if we had, if I could see the policy, the contract, feel a little bit better about that, and then see, you know, let the union committee meet, discuss it, look at the union contract, make sure that we're squared away there. So, I guess, is there a motion to table till next month?
If you need one.
That'll be fine.
Mr. President, move to table the presentation from the Sheriff regarding deputy positions at the city of Jonesboro.
I have a motion from Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Polling, to table the request from the Sheriff regarding the two deputies in Jonesboro. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Polling?
Aye.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Lemming?
Aye.
Millsworth?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'm gonna go ahead and move the Commissioners' items up to be on the agenda next. So, next item on our new business, Grand County Commissioner Ronster with the transfers of appropriation within the general fund, transfers of appropriation within CCD, and then the additional appropriations within the ARPA fund.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you. Mr. President, if you'd mind me, I apologize for having another report. As you can, as you can, if you gentlemen are ready, as you can see, there's in your packet the letters for the additional appropriations for the ARPA, as well as funded transfers in the general fund, as well as the CCD fund. And I'll answer any questions as you gentlemen may have.
So, the requests are, the transfers are from Social Security, Medicare, to Workman's Comp in the amount of forty thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. From promotional to official bonds in the amount of two hundred and ninety-six dollars. From soldier burial to Memorial Day Fund in the amount of two hundred dollars. And then, soldier burial to institutional in the amount of a thousand dollars. And then, the following transfer within the CCD Fund, equipment to vehicles in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Are there any other questions regarding those transfers? And you have everything you need?
Yes, everything's good.
If there's no question regarding transfers, I'd entertain a motion.
If you approve.
Sorry?
I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott, to approve within the Grand County Ward Commissioners' General Fund, the transfers that I've already outlined. Any questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
He's online. There he is.
Polling?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Millsworth?
Yes. Motion carries. So, we'll go on to the additional appropriations, which would be the ARPA fund.
If you want to. So, what we've, what we're presenting to you, to you gentlemen this evening, is two hundred thousand for the recycle center building cover, a hundred and fifty thousand for chiller rental for the D Home, I believe, that's, yeah, the D Home. Seventy-five thousand to Jonesboro for their demolition project, that'll be awarded to the town. A hundred thousand for Cardinal Greenway, and that portion will connect in Upland. I believe that's, a hundred thousand's gonna be used for the portion in Upland. I think they've got like a three, a three-phase that they're asking for, and this would be for the Upland part. Fifty thousand dollars for the detention home mold remediation, and six hundred and fifty thousand total, and that would be fifty thousand to each township in the county to be used for communications equipment for their volunteer fire departments. And Mr. Hicks and Mr. Jackson would plan this for them to oversee the purchase of that, of that radio equipment, so. And that's all we have tonight for that.
Are there any questions or comments? I believe they've all been advertised.
Yes, they have.
So, we're good there?
Mr. James, why fifty thousand to each township for the radios?
So, and, and Mr. Millsworth can hop in here. So, we originally talked about thirty thousand to each township, and in the discussion, we just didn't feel like that was enough. And we had, you know, we've got the money to spend, and we just felt like the thirty thousand was not gonna be enough to cover their needs, so.
So, you have the, I might piggyback on it. When we analyzed the township fires, it was pretty obvious that going to this phase, P-25, we're gonna be switching over to all the radios, that the thirty thousand, like you said, wasn't enough. And it's probably closer to, what, eighty to a hundred at some of the other townships?
Bob Jackson told us that, you know, the fifty is doable for them, you know, where they need to be right now.
But this is all communication. It's, I believe, the Commissioners' plan specified communication equipment. So, it could be radios, pagers, any communication equipment. And it's one of the requirements that we have to be by a certain date to the P-25 capabilities.
Correct. And I'm not against any of it. It's just the fifty thousand is devoted to each township. To me, it's like, that's gonna potentially shortchange a center township or a middle township, but it's gonna be a windfall for one of our smaller townships.
And that, that's where Bob--
So, are we, I mean, is the fifty thousand just like as a, as a, is it, or are we giving six hundred and fifty thousand to be divvied out amongst all departments? Or are we physically giving fifty thousand? Or are we physically giving 50,000 to each township? Because if I was one of the smaller or the bigger township, I'd be a little upset.
And I believe, I believe we talked about that.
Yeah, so I believe that in your plan, correct me if I'm wrong, that they, each township's not, we're not giving them 50,000. We're going to be the body, not we, Bob Jackson and Kevin are going to be the bodies that say, what are your needs? And then we're buying the equipment.
Got you.
Yep.
So we're not, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Up to 50,000.
I have one question. Why are we paying 150,000 for this chiller rental? Yeah, when we, when we paid for this, like in November, 1.3 million, not to exceed, not to put it out there. And then they hit us with this 150,000. Shouldn't that come out of their pockets since they couldn't produce the chiller?
Well, that's a great question.
I mean, that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
I can do it, it'd be on me, you know what I'm saying?
And we talked about that. I met with Mr. Millsworth and Mr. Connor and Mr. Hicks when we, when we were doing this. And we, and I believe we talked about that. I don't think we just, I don't think we have much of a choice. They haven't seemed, I'm trying to figure out how to word this. They haven't seemed upfront and working with us on exactly what you're asking for. So we're trying to be diplomatic now, but yeah, it's, so we feel like, I mean.
You feel like we got that.
Yeah, yeah. And they, like I said, they haven't really, they haven't really stepped up to say, hey, we'll work with you on this.
That's your question, Ron. Mr. President, do you want, can that one wait another month?
Absolutely.
Maybe have some legal discussion on this matter, just to make sure.
Yep.
This.
Yeah, we can table any of them or.
Yeah, we can choose or we can take whatever you guys want to do. We can table any of this.
At least that one, at least that one.
Yeah. I don't think that's.
Because I don't want you to say too much. I'm not commissioner attorney, but I don't want you to get too much into legal matters.
Right.
Say too much because you could bag the county theoretically.
Right.
What you're saying. So I think it might need to be some more discussion on that one.
I know Mr. Hicks had a comment about the radios.
So yes, if I can, the discussion had to been just to give the 50,000 to the township or the municipalities who have volunteer fire departments. So Liberty Township would not be receiving 50,000. Sims Township would because they have Swayze. Jefferson Township would receive 100,000 because they have two volunteer fire departments. So not every township is going to be receiving the 50,000 if that makes, if that helps to clarify.
Yeah, that's new information. I appreciate that.
Well, I was under the influence, it was all to buy equipment, and you guys were putting it out to them, that I never knew each town, there was actually given them 50,000.
No, no, I don't believe we are. We're.
I thought that wasn't the plan.
No.
That's what you said.
All these radios are going to be the same, aren't they? When they order these radios? The way I understand it is there was 11 townships, right? Township volunteer fire departments?
13.
Or 13, 13? That they could, that we would be the facilitators of up to 50,000 for communication equipment.
Right.
Not that we're giving them.
We're giving them 50,000.
Correct.
Township.
Yeah.
That's the way I understood it.
Yeah, me too.
We may need to.
Yeah, that may need to be clarified on your end.
Because I wasn't expecting this conversation tonight. I was expecting the, oh, the safety radios for the sheriff and, sorry, I was misprepared.
That's okay, yeah, we, we can discuss it offline with you and Mr. Jackson.
That was just an approximation figure to arrive at the total.
Yeah. Yeah, we, like I said, we were at 30, and I can't remember, Mr. Millsworth, I can't remember what number we were, it was like, when were you told like 85 or 90 was, is what we actually needed to.
Yep.
Yeah, and so.
Could I intervene? This is Mike's fault, and could I intervene?
Yeah, if you have something valuable to take your hand put.
The, the amount to completely outfit one of the volunteer fire departments is $106,000. The amount to outfit one of the smallest departments was around $42,000. There are 13 volunteer fire departments. Some of them are individually owned and some of them are owned by the townships. The money is going to be distributed to the townships, who can then give it to the volunteer fire departments, who can spend the money on communications equipment.
That's not, you're going to have to nail down the details of that in the commissioners' meeting.
Yeah, for sure. There seems to be a lot of. There seems to be a lot of confusion.
Yeah. Plan states, I don't think it specifies each township. I think it specifies a total dollar amount of 650.
Correct. 650 total, 50,000 going to each township in the county to use for.
Yeah.
And maybe that's something we can talk, because we're in, or, you know, we got to force this meeting again.
Yeah, I think we just need to clarify the details. It seems like.
I think you got five. I think we're a little.
What are your thoughts?
It's not yet.
I would.
I would recommend hoping off on the 1.50 and 650 right now. Because there seems to be a lot of confusion. So I would, I would recommend, obviously, Joe, do what you want to do. But I would recommend that you table those two items, so we get some further clarification.
Because regardless, cannabis law are going to be involved.
Yeah, correct.
So, I mean, it almost seems like to me that we approve an overall dollar amount, allow the, allow these two to decide who gets what and where the equipment that's needed.
Yeah.
That's the way I believe that.
Make the most sense to me.
And that's, that's what we talked all along. Yeah, that's what we talked about.
Which their plans discommunication equipment, not anything else.
Not that.
I know.
I think we.
Perfect. And then just iron down the details. Yeah. Okay. Sounds good.
If I might add one more thing, this was advertised a certain way. Sounds like you might want it to go another way as far as who's getting what. So it's another reason why you want to table this one and make sure it's advertised properly for the next year. In line with what you gentlemen want the commissioners want.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve everything except 150,000 for the chiller and the 650,000 to the townships.
Second, I have a motion for Mr. Polling, a second for Mr. Scott to approve the following additional appropriations regarding ARPA, the commissioners. The 200,000 to the recycle center building cover, the 75,000 to Jonesboro demolition project that has to be going to the city of Jonesboro, 100,000 to the Cardinal Greenway, 50,000 to the detention center, home mold remediation, and then tabling the 2, 150,000 for the chiller and the 650 for the township radios. We're all clear on the motions? Any comments or questions for the members?
The rest of the commissioners are good with this. I don't, you only sign, usually, usually all three sign, but I mean, there's.
Yes, sir.
I'm working. Anything could be, just to make sure.
Yeah, any check. A roll call, please.
Polling.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Lenny.
Aye.
Millsworth.
Yes. Motion carries. Then do we need to enter any other discussions? Anything that's coming?
If it's okay with you, I'll just, we'll wait for a couple of weeks to do that. That's.
Yep.
We'll reconvene.
We'll reconvene the committee. Myself and Mr. Connor, Mr. Hicks, in about two weeks.
Next week, yeah, I'll be out next week, but then the following week. And if you, if you, you gentlemen just want to shoot me a day, I'll, unless I've got something.
Yeah, we'll pretty much have to have everything ironed out by your next commissioners' meeting, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think I do. So, so we'll just, still business, and we'll just, you have a couple of weeks, so.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's all you have?
Yeah, that's all I got, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be.
You too.
So we'll move back to item B, Grant County Clerk Pam Harris with the transfer of appropriation, also a 2020 HAV election security local grant application. Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to be this evening. Did you want to, first off, I had the transfer of appropriations. Would you want to go there first? Okay. I think it might have been, I guess, the commissioners' meeting that we had a discussion. Or maybe it was your last time, you know, for our budget, our budget hearing. This is, this is the money to pay for my part-time individuals. Last year, I also had to move money from one appropriation fund to the other to cover this position through the remainder of the year. And that's what I'm doing again. I would like to move the 2,240 from the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund, the Supply Fund, over to the Part-Time Fund to pay this part-time position through the end of this year. And then for next year, I have a comment for that with my budget, so I should have to ask for, to move money next year.
Are there any questions or comments regarding the transfer request in the amount of $2,240 from Supplies to the Part-Time Fund?
Can I make a motion to approve?
A motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Hicks to approve the clerk's request of the transfer in the amount of $2,240 from Supplies to the Part-Time Light Item. And both of those categories are in the 1119 Perpetuation Fund. Do you have everything you need? Any questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Scott.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Polling.
Yes.
Lenny.
Aye.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to your 2024 grant application.
This is the HAVA grant that the Secretary of State has made available to us. And the reward Grant County was awarded the $54,221. The HAVA grant is helping America vote app. I am speaking with Angie, and she, if approved, will help me get a fund set up to handle these monies. Shelley Sapp, Grant County employee, who has handled a lot of, worked with a lot of grant situations, has also offered her help in helping me, because I've never been a part of a grant situation before, so I'm kind of very, very grateful. So they are both making themselves available. And I'm sure you know that the, we have to purchase the items that I have requested, and then we turn the receipts into the Secretary of State, and then they in turn will reimburse the county. The items that, that we're needing, one fire resistant, fire resistant filing cabinet to hold our ballots as they come back in. We have a cabinet that is a little bit smaller and older. It's not fire resistant, and that was one of the concerns of the Election Board Chairman. He was concerned about that cabinet. And so that is in the $5,672.88. I have it, and it's massive, as far as it'll be like 1,100 pounds. So I'm working with Vince, and he is going to be helping us get it into the building. And so, so that, that is one of the, because of course the truck's just going to drop it off on the curb, so we've got that. Also, I'm needing more, nine more high-speed printers for our locations. We have some of our voting locations that have up to 10, eight to 10 election machines. And so the high-speed printers will help us her speed the process along. And that's 6,750. A totem display, there are documents and posters and things that the state requires we post at each location. Well, the locations, if they don't have a bulletin board or something they don't really like, is taking things to their painting walls. So this is, it's a display that has clear plastic things that we can pre-mount or pre-package these things, so they just set them up. And then finally is, this is, this is what the commissioners had a bit of concern about was the, those totems for 1,018.53 and 12 cents. A software called an island software. This is going to be a total of 40,000, 34 for the program and implementation and the training at 30, and then the second year maintenance and support would be another 10. But the Secretary of State is paying for that as well.
What about the 30?
Exactly. That, that is something that we have been told that, that there's a real strong chance that Secretary of State will also be offering another grant. And what I, what I have discovered, what some of the counties have done, which I wasn't aware of this ahead of time, was that they, they requested a three and four-year maintenance to cover that, that 10,000, which I did, I did, they should do that. So, but yes, so that, that would be something to come up with. The contractor that Kyle has, and he is going over that as we speak, and that's what the commissioners were. You have a box here?
Nope.
Oh, sorry. Okay, okay.
I'm trying to research this island company. It was just kind of a strange name.
Yeah, it is, isn't it?
Just trying to make sure they're legit.
Yeah.
The commissioners waiting on Kyle to get back with them.
Right, uh-huh. There are several counties that are already using it. I know there's Pike, Putmans, Carey, Jay, Spencer, to name just a few, and they've been very, very happy with it. And what it is, is like the candidates, they can put a little blurb about themselves on this, that the voters can go on and check out who's running, because we get that question quite often, you know, people calling wanting some information about various candidates. Well, you know, we don't have that information. If people need to do that research on their own, well, this will be an avenue for them to do that. Also, as the results come in, those who listen there, they can pull that up on their phone or online. Sometimes they're wanting percentages and graphs. All that information will also be there.
I apologize, I may be asking questions that you already covered. Like I was trying to do a little research at the same time until pay attention, so. So is this going to improve and increase what we already have? Is this to speed things up, in your opinion, when it comes to Election Day? Is it going to be?
It would, they say, it should help speed things up, but it would also be another avenue or maybe a better avenue to get information to the voters, because they, and help field phone calls, because we do get throughout the day, people calling in, especially later in the day, calling in, wanting to know what's going on, the results. And, you know, we're busy tabulating and getting, pulling this information together and getting it tabulated. And this would be an avenue where they could go online or on their phone or something, and they could see it in real time. Does that make sense?
It does. I thought we could do that already on Election Day. You can get updates and what's, as, as the numbers are coming in, you can get that online currently, correct?
Yes, so this is, it's just beefed up, you know, it's colorful and spelled out a little better. little better with, with the graphs and diagrams and pie charts, you know, so.
Do you feel like the software's, it hasn't been a necessity, so to speak, right? You're just trying to improve the visual side of?
Right.
But that comes with a cost, right? And it's the 10-year maintenance fee every year if you don't get a grant, right?
Right.
And so is there, I know we've worked, I mean, you have worked pretty hard at getting us results quicker, right? Because we're all waiting, and, you know, we want the results as quick as you put them in, right?
Right.
You've already took action on some other things, right? As far as software, like, a few years ago, we made some software adjustments to try to get the results quicker.
I'm sorry. So I might, I might sit right down.
Yeah.
No, if, if, if this is something that you're not interested in, you know, it's totally up to you, this money will just go back to the Secretary of State for that particular part of the grant. The cute little decorative check has been given to us, but like I said, no money has been given to us. But, but if you, you think it's not a necessary part of this plan, then that $40,000 would just, you know, the, the Secretary of State would just hang on to that and use it in another way.
I know the commissioners expressed the same feeling, that they were worried about the ongoing expense of $10,000, right? Do you think that if you had the four, if you had it to resubmit a grant, would you choose something different, or would you still choose the software? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no, that's fine. I'll be honest, there, and I can't, you know, I might have chosen something else. There's something else that, again, is coming through the Secretary of State's office that, and I don't, it's just a brand, a brand new idea, that a gentleman stopped by the office and talked to us about it, but, but I don't know a lot about it yet, but, you know, it's, that's, there, there's always things coming up, you know, new programs, new ideas, so.
Which, I think, what I'm thinking of, we hire someone to be on-site right now to, to help.
Oh, with the micro boat, possibly?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so we, years past, we didn't have a representative on-site, right, for micro boat?
I think since I have been, they have, but before, I don't, I don't know that yet. But I think, I think that's something that Carolyn might have started not too long before I, I came into office.
The software company is through this, they're using the state's data, or how, how are, how is it going to?
They're, well, they would, would get their information from us as far as who, who's on the ballot and things like that, and then they would pull all that information. But yeah, I don't believe they're getting that from the state. They would be getting it, gathering it from the county.
Okay. Would you have to change your policies, then, the, on how this would be used as far as?
No.
At the election board?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Can you go back and change, like, the grant request to something different? Is it two ways, that possible?
No, that can't, but.
Figured it wasn't, but I'd ask anyways.
Yeah, that's.
The commissioners are still, okay. You have to give it to the board, you're right.
Yeah, they're wanting Kyle to, to double-check that, and he, he has it, but he's not got back with it yet.
I think in the perfect world, you could get the software and plant on the $10,000 every year as a grant.
Yeah. But it's totally up to, of course, you know, I don't have to tell you that. It's totally up to you. And if you aren't comfortable with that, then.
So what do you need from us this evening? You want us to approve that, the whole grant, or, and what do you want us to?
First, we'll wait, see what the commissioners come up.
You have heard the ending?
Per, by the commissioners?
I would make, I mean, I would make sure that contract doesn't tie you into four or five years of being.
Just.
That's what they were looking at.
I understand that, but you, does this have to be done tonight?
No.
Because I think that's, I mean, he doesn't want to point out, that's an important issue.
Yeah.
Are you bound, and you don't know what the contract says, so, then you see what that contract says, then, then approve the grant application.
So we stay consistent with the, what we've had tonight with the contract.
May I, may I ask this? Is this a possibility to, to approve the cap, everything, the other items except that portion, so that I can get?
It's a reimbursement grant.
Yeah, it's a reimbursement grant, so she needs to purchase the, whatever, whatever she, you gotta purchase it, then we'll get reimbursed.
Right, so, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
This body would need to, and Angie said that she would be working on a special fund for, for the clerk's office, but I would need to order that safe and pay for it.
Yeah.
And then send that invoice to the Secretary of State to reimburse you. I would need to pay for those high-speed printers, and, and then, and I would need to pay for those totems, but if you're not comfortable with an island, you know, so is that a possibility?
Absolutely. I think that we can go ahead and approve all those items, excluding the island. And then, do we have a account number, or?
I do not have any of that set up yet, but I will get what goes down.
Okay.
Without exception, I'd make that motion.
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Lanning to approve the HAVA grant Everything that has been requested, excluding the Island software piece. Are there?
So the details we have for the file cabinet, $5,600, $6,700 for the high-speed printers and $1,800 for the space.
Correct.
But is this all one? What I'm saying is, this all falls under that grant, correct? So if you pass this, you don't like this, is that going to mess your grant up?
According to what Pam says, it appears that it would not.
Yeah.
She said it could be submitted separately.
Yeah, actually, I have, the clerk's office hasn't even received it yet, so if, if we don't spend it, then.
Yeah.
I had the same thought. I had the same thought. You're happy, but it sounds like it's okay, based on her correspondence with Secretary of State.
Saying this is okay, we're locked in.
I don't think we're locked in. I think it's, since it's a reimbursement grant, if you can't purchase the item, then you would be on the hook, but.
Sure.
I do have one thought, as far as, as this big heavy safe, that's, that is the price for the safe. The clerk is still going to have to pay for, in working with Vince, in getting that off the curb and into the office, I may have a fee there, which Vince is giving me a price on that, so I will need to come back, possibly, unless Brenda says, oh, we can use it from here and move money to get my safe off the curb, but it shouldn't be, shouldn't be very much, and that should be within the clerk's budget. So I just want to.
It will fit through the door, right?
Yes, Vince did have to.
You did.
No, but thankfully, it doesn't have to, it's just going down the hall. Yeah, they're all going down.
Okay, I think I'm, yeah, I don't know, they're holding, but.
Yeah, I don't know. That counts.
That would be embarrassing. We watched it happen, um, Council, guess what?
Yeah, yeah.
Now we need 10.
Right, right.
I have a motion, I have a second. Everyone's clear on the motion? Any other comments from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Lanning.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Hi.
Pauling.
Yes.
Those were.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all. I appreciate it. Thank you all. Okay.
So that's two things, though. Next item on our new business, county extension, Christina Golf with the transfer of appropriation. Sorry for keeping you waiting.
That's okay.
Thanks for bringing a transfer audition.
No, yes, this is a transfer, my transfer transfer for the extension office, from equipment repair to overtime of $325, and from equipment to overtime for $100. This is due to overtime and before repair, and they work at showers there. We have made adjustments in our budget that we submitted, so hopefully I want to come back next year.
Is there any questions for the members?
I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Pauling to approve the transfers
within the Purdue extensions budget, equipment repair to overtime in the amount of $325, and from equipment to overtime in the amount of $100. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Pauling.
Yes.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Hi.
Lanning.
Hi.
Middle sore.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to take a break? We're good to proceed. Proceed on. Next item on our new business, Grant County, to Nathan Meeks with additional appropriation within the general fund, as well as a transfer of appropriation within the general fund. I believe he is online.
That's correct. Good evening, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
All right. I'm going to start with my oldest request, so you should have a copy of that email in your packet from July 24th. This deals with the personnel issues that we had when I took office. So there are seven employees of Grant Superior Two, not counting myself, and two of those employees are no longer there. So one of them was terminated, and one of them resigned her position. And so what I was asking for there was to have their back pay, vacation time, sick time, all that stuff paid out for them, and then to hire their replacements and have their replacements paid retroactively to their start date. Now, because we didn't have that August meeting, you know, obviously, this has already been taking effect for a while, and so I think their back pay's already been paid out, that's my understanding, and one of the replacements has already started and, and has started since August 5th, so, and she's been receiving her pay, so I think tonight's just the official adoption of that. The other replacement has not started, she's not starting until October 1st, so that's where we're at with that. I was requesting $15,000, and I talked to Angie earlier today to make sure that was still a good number, she thought it was, to make sure everything's covered.
Are there any questions from the members? Obviously, the idea was to keep the courts rolling, we missed the last meeting.
And these things are obligatory?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
A motion for Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Pauling to approve. It is an additional appropriation, correct, in the amount of $15,000, and where would you like it to go?
It goes salaries.
To salaries, okay. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Public input? Do you have everything you need? Roll call, I mean, yeah, public input, roll call.
Connor.
Yes.
Pauling.
Yes.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Hi.
Lanning.
Hi.
Those were.
Yes. Motion carries.
And then my second email, I'm not sure the date on that, but it deals with the transfer of funds, and then another additional appropriation. The transfer of funds that I was asking for, skip that, forget it, I don't need it anymore, just get rid of that. The additional appropriation is for $9,000 for the appeals and pauper council fund, and that account had originally had $11,000 appropriated to it. At the time I took office, there was less than $300 in that account, and bills were coming in from attorneys that have been appointed to matters, and so they're expecting to get paid. I've personally not appointed anyone to be paid out of that fund, so I'm, I'm not sure really what the fund is for. I've never really actually figured that out, but at any rate, there are bills that are outstanding, and so I think Angie had enlightened me, and, and I'll let her enlighten the council if need be, but there was maybe some error that had occurred in payment previously, and so that's what took the balance down quite a bit this year, because I think maybe there was something paid for the previous year out of this year, so I don't know if it's, is that right, Angie?
Yeah, prior judge and staff had paid for something out of a grant that wasn't supported by the grant, so we had to make a correction. Unfortunately, it crossed over from '23 to '24, that's why this account is so low.
So the.
But right now. Go ahead.
Now, go ahead, Mr. Meeks.
No, I was just going to say, right now, I think there's about $3,000 of outstanding bills for attorneys Katrina Lynn and Rebecca Johnson, and these bills date back to May. So, you know, they've been waiting several months to get paid, and I don't know that there's really any option, at least from my perspective, other than to pay the bills. They were appointed by the court, by my predecessor, to handle certain things, and they were expecting to get paid, so.
So.
I just had for $9,000 to make sure that we had plenty to get us through the rest of the year, but again, I've not appointed anyone yet to be paid out of this fund, and I'm not sure that I will for the rest of the year, so, but I just wanted to make sure we had plenty there.
Yep, it's an additional appropriation in the appeals and pauper fund in the amount of $9,000. Any questions or comments? This has been advertised.
Yes.
If there's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second, I have a motion for Mr. Pauling, a second for Mr. Scott to approve the additional appropriation in the amount of $9,000 to the account appeals and pauper fund. Any other questions from the members?
I'll just say, I intend to abstain because Rebecca Johnson's my law partner.
Okay.
That's the reason for that.
Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? Roll call, please.
Pauling.
Yes.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Hi.
Lanning.
Hi.
Middle sore.
Yes. Motion does carry.
I didn't hear my name abstained.
Do we need to clean up any of the back pay salary with the motion?
No, no.
I think it's covered, isn't it?
Yeah, I believe it's, it's good.
Okay, fine. Just wanted to make sure. Is there any other requests from Mr. Meeks we needed?
No, I think that's it. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thank you. Next item on our new business, item E, Grant County EMS, Don Haris with additional appropriation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My submitted request for just to clean up of the account, of two accounts, the, the line item that I'm currently paid out of was Dwayne's line item. When he left, he had accrued vacation sick time. That came out of my line item. That's item one, let's see, this has an item.
The next one.
The next one is the supervisors. That's just based on the hours they're working on now, and I know Angie had calculated these numbers for me. Going current with what they're working now, that's what we think we'll need for the rest of the year.
Is that supervisor salary or hour?
That's for all four of them.
So four supervisors at the hour is a problem.
The third one, that's my old line item, because of my payroll works. I didn't, we didn't have appropriation for my old line item in this year's budget, but yet my first pay of this year was paid out of that old line item.
Is that supervisor salary or hour?
That's for all four of them.
So four supervisors at the hour is a problem.
The third one, that's my old line item because of my payroll works. I didn't, we didn't have appropriation for my old line item in this year's budget, but yet my first pay of this year was paid out of that old line item. Okay. And then the last one on that first letter is the part timers that work as well. Again, based on their current hours, we think that'll get us through the rest of the year. And I've got that second off, though. Yeah, second letter, okay. By the time you guys changed your meeting, I had realized there was another one I forgot to clean up. That one is also a payroll laundry. The part time person I had last year is full time now, but her first pay of this year came out of the old part timeline item. So I was going to leave that short. So really, let's see, one, two, three cleanups and two.
I know Angie and I discussed this today in our office a little bit. She seemed that everything was...
I think I used your numbers exactly, except that other one that I missed.
And two, we did discuss that probably there would be some monies left over as far as in your budget that could wash some of this out too, possibly?
Possibly. And those two for the supervisor and the part time people may not use it depending. You never know if the hours are going to go that way. Sometimes we have overtime every single pay. Sometimes we don't have it. Sometimes we have one truck, someone calls off, and we can't fill it. So that's just the best estimate based on current hours.
If they're working more, kind of turns the other side, it's going to be more billable hours.
Exactly. Sure, sure, sure.
Yes. If there's no questions regarding the additional appropriations, I entertain a motion. Second, a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Scott to approve the additional appropriations within the EMS department, 12,981 to 11,100, 16,315 to the count of 14,000, 3,335 to the count 14,001, and then 4,322 to 14,003, account number. And also including the additional appropriation within 11,200 in the amount of $700. Are there any other questions or comments from the members?
Total of $37,000.
Angie, do you have everything you need?
I do.
Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Aye.
Polling?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Anything else for me?
If, during our discussions, if, obviously you have some ambulances. I know you're not prepared, but I thought I'd just mention it to you.
I'll see.
Okay. It took roughly about two years to get the formally ordered, correct? So when do you expect to order more to replace the rest of the fleet? Would that be next year?
I had initially thought we should do it. I didn't do that. However, I'm not sure I would do four again. I don't know. I think we should wait a year. I mean, we can have this conversation another time, but with the extra technically three that I'm going to have on the slower volunteer units, I don't think I'm going to need four the next time. But it all depends. You know, these 2011s, maybe the next year will turn me wrong and I...
Yeah, I was looking through the asset list, and I've seen that.
Did you get it?
Yeah, I see some of them, you know, were 11s and then 18s. I just want to make sure that if we need to use more ARPA dollars to buy more ambulances, that that could be another possibility since, you know, we're just two years to get the last...
Exactly. And that's not changing as far as I know. It's still, that's their schedule. But we can talk about that if you want to. I just thought we might skip a year and then order them maybe and maybe put them on order like 25. I don't know.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on that. Thank you.
I was at a conference last week, too, that said there's all kinds of ARPA money sitting out there. Okay. There's still ARPA money out there. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, is there a way to apply for use?
Not yet. But I'm sure that we'll probably be next year. Next item under new business, item H, Central Dispatch, Kevin Hicks, with a transfer of appropriation in the 911 fund.
You need to look, if you need your time? I just realized that there is a mismatch on my calculations here. I am requesting the $4,000 transfer from a contractor to overtime to cover my deputy director's overtime. She and I have been tag teaming, covering vacations and call offs and such for my dispatch. I've spent the last week working split day to nights, and she's been covering the day shift stuff and doing her administrative stuff as well. So if I get the 4,000, I would greatly appreciate that.
Are there any questions from the members? If not, I entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second from Mr. Polling to approve within the 1222 fund, transfer from contractual in the amount of 4,000 to overtime. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Polling? Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you again for your interest in the ARPA. It's going to really help our public safety and all that says.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item under new business, Grant County Highway, David White with an additional appropriations within the MVH restricted fund as well as a transfer of appropriation within the MVH final 176. Good evening, sir.
The first thing we got started with is the additional for the MVH restricted, asking for $25,000 in stone and gravel, and the additional $1 million for PD projects throughout the county, and then additional $340,000 for equipment for pickup trucks, and also maybe trying to purchase one nine tire award for next year's season. Here we go with the rest. I don't know, we stop there.
You can proceed on if you want.
The next is basically some transfers for the MVH fund. Transfer $2,000 out of calcium chloride to radios, for some radios. Transfer $1,000 out of calcium chloride to CDL drug and alcohol testing. And then the last one is transfer $50,000 vehicle insurance to equipment to purchase three large stone piles for township dump trucks.
You allow much new piles?
I'd like to get a couple more to have.
How much, how much is each one of those?
Right now, I've got quotes for around 17, you got $20,000 for a plow. Originally, I could get him about around 13,000.
What are you going to get, just now and 10 more?
Get my all out there, right or what? No, they'll be in the barn. They'll be getting care of, so.
He's got that overhead. It's all nice.
You're coming out pretty well tonight, all this news. You're going to need some ARPA money.
Yeah, no, I can...
I mean, is there anything else you need?
I can give you...
Let's get this out of the way now.
I can give you a big list.
Are there any questions regarding the additional pickup trucks?
Right now, I've got quotes right around 45, or 48,000 to 55,000.
You just made dollars for the paving that we've done this year or next?
I'm going to try to get as much done this year as I can. Right now, we've currently spent about 3.5 million this year. And out of that 3.5 million, we got right around 900,000 from the state of Krosenham. So those roads where you paved them where they had bridges out on Highway 15 and now that tracks in the...
Autobots.
Yeah.
Can you purchase the trucks like the sheriff's? Government can purchase vehicles or what?
They call them that. They have a discount.
Yeah.
I do. There's actually, I discovered a few days, a few nights ago, there's a website that Indiana contracts and bids go to the website. Anybody can view them from the state bid.
Right.
I mean, they have fuel and everything on there. You can roll through the contracts.
Really?
It's an open portal. It's kind of neat.
They also have a, they call it, it's a pedal. You buy a clipper. The only thing is if you have to get on there, the prices are already set.
I've seen that, too.
I've bullied with that a few times.
These are additional, but it's money you have right out.
Yes, yeah. We did talk on the phone, Mr. White, today. 4B doesn't support the request within 1173, but he can make a transfer.
That is correct. He can transfer funds from 1176 to 1173. I'll keep an eye on cash balances of those two funds. Make sure everybody in New York has...
But we do have the funds total.
Yes.
22.
We don't need to make it by, we just need to make it by end of year.
If it's needed.
Right. Just so everyone's aware.
The 4B said I had a surplus of 1.9 million. So I think we can go all out of it. I have 1.4 million, so basically I've 500,000. I mean, you're going back to the highway.
Needs more equipment. I had to drive.
There's no other questions or comments. I entertain a motion.
Move the request as soon as possible.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Scott, a second for Mr. Polling to approve the additional appropriations within the MVH restricted fund, 1173, additional in the amount of 25,000 to gravel and stone and gravel, additional million to paving projects, 300 North. Just kidding. Additional appropriations in the amount of 340,000 in equipment. And then, within MVH 1176, a transfer of 2,000 from calcium chloride to the radio line item, and a transfer of 1,000 from calcium chloride to CDL drug and alcohol, and then also a transfer of 50,000 from vehicle insurance to equipment. Are there any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Polling?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes.
I want to...
Motion carries.
ARPA money. Do have a contract right here. See if they get approval with Mr. Persinger. The commissioners gave me authorization to sign it for the recycled facility. And so it'll be the quote, or I'm sorry, the contracts were 120,295. So I could say you might take $75,000 of that 200 you ordered tonight and put it back into something else. So thank you for that. So.
Thank you. I know there was two different quotes he got. One was with letters and one was without.
Yeah.
It was...
140,000 with the letters on it and 120,000 without the letters. We thought we could get some letters.
We appreciate your...
I could write a billboard up there for that. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'll definitely be charting in my day if that's the case.
Yeah. Wouldn't it just be file stuff?
Yeah, sure it is.
When I thought, I heard that, I was like, man. The next item under new business, item H, Grant County Area Plan, Jim Straws with the transfer of appropriation within the general fund as well as a salary ordinance amendment, general fund. Good evening, sir.
Thank you for hearing my request. I believe all of you have got my letter, and I'm just going to try to be brief. With my executive assistant being off due to a medical condition, and Katie has stepped up and has assumed her position, plus working on her own. Her biweekly salary right now is 140270, and this increase that we're asking for would take her up to 1619. That's about a 21670 increase in pay. I've been here for a few short months, and I can tell you that without Katie, I'd probably be totally lost up there. She's a very outstanding young person. She's very helpful. And I know when Ryan left, Brenda had stepped up to cover Ryan's position, and they gave her Ryan's pay for the time that I got hired. So I'm asking for the same consideration for Katie. The other two things that I have here, it's $500 to be transferred into the photo and blueprint, minimal fees. We have been sending out a lot of notices due to solar and other things that we're doing up there. So we're running low on that account. We need a little bit more money on that. And then the other one is 15,000 from the equipment fund to go into office supplies. This will cover us for the rest of the year and hopefully replace a few chairs up there that are literally falling apart. You mean 1500? I'm sorry, 1500. Yes. It's been a very long day. I've been at a conference in the southern part of the state. I raced back up here because Katie said, you know, you'll probably be hurt around 6:30 or so.
Yeah, sorry about that. Might not hurt.
And this is the first time I've appeared in front of you, gentlemen. And I'm, sometimes I get a little bit nervous. But I've been in public service for, I've been in public service for four or five years. Every time I speak in front of county council or something like that, or even city council, I get a little nervous. But these things are, in my personal opinion, they're minimal. And I believe they are needed.
Mr. Hicks over at Hallmark.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah. Welcome to Grant County.
Are there any questions regarding the transfers? We can go ahead and knock those out if you want.
Make motion to approve.
You second. I have a motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Hicks to approve the transfers within the Grant County Area Plan, transferring 500 to blueprints and legal fees and legal fund and photo, and from equipment. And then 1500 from the equipment fund to office supplies. Are there any other questions from the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Scott?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Polling?
Yes.
Lemming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries on that. So now we're to the salary ordinance amendment to increase the pay. Are we going to make it retroactive to August the 30th?
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention that.
Yeah. We'd make it salary ordinance amendment retroactive to August the 30th pay, and it would be what? Do we need per hour or total?
I believe that's a total.
How would you like this for the salary orders? Do you want it per hour or just the total?
And this is going to the end of the year?
Right.
Until, I believe it goes until the, until Brenda comes back.
Until Brenda comes back.
It's a part of the returns.
Should we just approve this 161940? Give a specific timeframe?
At present time, we're not 100% sure when Brenda will get back. I haven't spoken to her in, you know, a week or so, but I was planning on making contact with her to see how her therapy and everything is going. I mean, I know these surgeries can be tricky. So...
Yeah, we don't need to get into that because of...
Or at least until her return.
If I can suggest maybe make any amendment to reflect Katie taking on that position with that salary until the return of that employee.
taking on that position with that salary until the return of that employee. And not have to stay in now because she's just been assigned that.
Yeah, I ask it to mention the employee's name, the condition, be limited from the minutes. Doesn't matter.
So state how you want the motion to be. Amend the salary ordinance to?
To, uh, allow her to be paid the salary of the vacated position currently until that employee returns, uh, retrograde to eight thirty.
So move. Second. I have a motion from Mr. Connor, a second from Mr. Scott to amend the salary ordinance to pay Katie the position's pay that is vacated until that person returns. And make her retroactive to eight thirty. Do you, do you think that, uh, at the end of the year, there'll be unused dollars in the salaries? This will be offsetted at all?
Well, they have enough, um, in their salary count that will cover this, so they're, they're in short.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay.
Are there any other questions or comments?
How many people are working in the office currently?
Right now I have a, that, that, I have a supervisor for my code enforcement. Uh, I have code enforcement and then my building inspector and myself.
So you've got four people, do you?
Currently, yes. But I'm, there's, there's five that have office manager.
Any other questions for the members? Public input? A roll call, please.
Connor.
Yes.
Scott.
Hi.
Hicks.
Yes.
Perez.
Yes.
Polling.
Yes.
Limmin.
Hi.
Middleford.
Yes. Motion carries. And we have it all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have some rest. I still, I still look like an hour north.
Wait at least an hour before you get rest.
Yeah. I was joking, Randy, maybe I should just probably tell them this, let them know.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you. Old business, we already scratched out the ARPA discussion. Are there any committee reports? Probably two committee meetings, one for ARPA for the next two weeks. And then probably a committee meeting for, um, the Sheriff's Department, the union, uh, commit, the union negotiation committee. And I know last year we had a committee that looked over the salaries prior to that special meeting on October the second. I don't remember, was it me? Who was it last year? Vice President, President?
No, it was you, uh, like, oh, for the union?
No, for the.
For the salaries, you three and me.
Okay. So, good, okay. And then union can be decided, I mean. We've got a committee. We've got some work ahead of us, that's all I know. So our next meeting would be the special meeting Wednesday, October the second. And then our regular scheduled meeting would be Wednesday, October the sixteenth. And that special meeting will hammer out some budget issues. I'll probably be sending out again, so if we have any more outstanding budget, budget issues for that meeting, try to finalize, so to speak, that evening. Anything else missing?
Uh, the final adoption of the budget will be held at the regularly scheduled council meeting on October.
Sixteenth. Anything for the good of the word?
I gotta, just before we, uh, we leave, I just wanna say thank you for giving the information that I had asked for, I know this took a lot of information, so I just wanna make sure I say my thank you. You, Mr. Polling, anybody else that helped you here.
I know the committee will be reviewing as far as salaries go. Angie has a lot more documentation comparing us to other counties. Do you wanna talk a little bit about that?
I have been working on compiling some information comparing assessed values, um, census, um, with.
Wayne.
Wayne, Warren, year down, but this place now they can do it. There were four very comparable counties. I also looked at their, their per, who questioned what counties, you know, covered, what southern covers the fourteen point two percent, not just the eleven. So, um, I do, I have done several of the different departments that I can present to you in our meeting or in our October second meeting.
And she was doing that, uh, you know, in depth on your questions.
It is hard to do apples to apples because every county has a different list of employees. Some departments are confined, um, it, it, they vary, yep, they vary. It's very time consuming and it's very hard to depict what is comparable with us when it comes to employees. But I'm doing the best I can to get our employees, I mean.
From what you've seen so far, do you feel like that you're in a position to do just a, either a percentage or a dollar amount, or do we need to look at based upon title of making the trust?
That's gonna be a decision that you guys are gonna need to be made. I, I, I like the flat amount for some areas, percentages for others, but that would be a nightmare for me, so I, I guess I would have to lean towards percentage.
The other thing too, that committee needs to meet with.
Prosecutor.
Prosecutor.
With the defender.
Public defenders to, to figure out what we're gonna do there. Okay. Next meeting, October the second.
October third.
Second. Meeting adjourned.